Good evening. The time is now 6:00 PM on Monday, March 18th, 2024. I call the Lexington Select Board to order. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format via the application Zoom, allowing remote public participation. All members of the board are present in person. Members of the public can view and participate in the meeting from their device by clicking on the link provided in the meeting agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Further, this evening's meeting is being broadcast live and archived by Lex Media for future on-demand viewing. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this board are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. Members of the board are in person tonight. I'm Joe Pato, the board chair. Sitting on my right is Vice Chair Susie Barry, and on her right is Jill Hay. Sitting on my left is Doug Lucenti, and on his left is Mark Sandin. Joining us from staff are Jim Malloy, Town Manager, and Kelly Exdel, Deputy Town Manager. Also joining us remotely is Kim Katzenbach, the Select Board Executive Clerk. Tonight's meeting is a regular meeting of the board, and we will be taking general public comments. Before we start this comment section of our meeting, I would like to remind all participants that we are neighbors and are working together in the best interests of our community. I ask that all comments be made with civility and respect and without casting aspersions or reference to motives. Open public comments are for items not otherwise covered on our agenda. Comments are allowed for up to 10 minutes total. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. Members of the board will neither comment nor respond other than to ask clarifying questions.
Mr. Pato, I'm not sure if I missed it, but we don't have public comment on the agenda tonight unless I'm looking at the wrong agenda.
You are right. We do not have public comment. We will take comment on items. So the remaining material is, if you are recognized to comment on an item, if you're remote by telephone, you should press star nine to be recognized or click on the raise hand button of the Zoom application. When you are recognized to speak, please state your name, address, and any relevant board or committee affiliation. And tonight I will be using the Zoom timer feature and will interrupt at two minutes. We have no board comments or town manager's comments. We will proceed immediately to item number one, which is the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Ms. Exdel, do you want to set the stage?
Yes, thank you. We have two specific articles to discuss tonight. The first one will be Article 31. So the proponent is here to discuss and answer any questions. He was specifically asked to come back to give an update to the board around outreach.
Thank you, Ms. Exdel. So I believe that's Mr. Wanderer. If you would come and sit at the table.
I did print out a summary of the.
I'm going to ask you to hold the speaking because for people who are, no, you can give us the paper, but you need to speak into a microphone for the people to hear us. So I'll ask you to sit and speak from that mic when you're ready.
Absolutely.
Kelly, you go first.
Thank you.
Is this on?
I have to hit the little button. No, we'll come on.
There you go.
Okay, hi. So I was asked to do some more outreach for this bottle, Article 31 banning single-use plastic water bottles. And in, and I did. I went to Concord, Massachusetts to see how that had affected the establishments in Concord. And I, I found that, I talked to four places. Cafe Nero was, was quite enthusiastic about the bottle bill there moving to, to glass bottles for all their beverages. The other three, Sally Ann Food Shop, Camellias, and Main Street Market, did not really seem to like the idea. I did check also with the Coverland Farms, and they had an impressive selection of aluminum containers of water for as little as $1.39. I went to Crosby's Market as well and found that they had very little plain water for sale. In Lexington, I, do you want me to go through all 19 of these or just? I saw, I went to 19 different establishments. I was very impressed with the fact that there is free water available in most of them, for a lot of them. Pete's does not sell plastic water bottles. The liquor store in Lexington Center does not sell PET plastic water bottles. Grant Ranks, it was an interesting thing at Ranks. When pigs fly, we'll give you a non-plastic cup for your water and then send you over to Ranks to get the water because they have a filtered bubbler. And the people at Ranks were wondering why all these people were coming with, with water glasses asking for free water, but now they know. So anyway, the, the, the general feeling I got was that it didn't sound like a big deal to anyone. The, the biggest objection I got was from the Theater Pharmacy, who, who said that she goes to Costco and buys the stuff, puts it in the refrigerator, and therefore it's probably going to make her life a little more difficult. But Stop &amp; Shop is listed as one of the companies in Lexington that sells water in aluminum bottles. They don't, but the website that sells the aluminum bottles claims that Stop &amp; Shop is one of their customers. And so I'm sure that when we, if this passes, that Stop &amp; Shop will seamlessly switch to aluminum water bottles. It's my feeling. But I did talk to Stop &amp; Shop, and they were not, and they, they once again said they sell a lot of water and they're not a fan.
Thank you, Mr. Wanderer. Ms. Malloy, you were going to speak with Mr. Macarios, our Town Council, about Concord's experience.
And actually, Mina is on his way. He just texted me because he was planning on just addressing that with the board directly. And he got caught in traffic. He said he should be here in like 10 minutes.
Very good.
So he may not be here immediately, but he and I didn't discuss it. We just discussed, and we decided it would be better for him just to directly talk to the board about it. That way, if he had questions, he could answer them.
Right. Significantly, if I understood Mr. Macarios before, the language of this motion duplicates the Concord bylaw.
It does.
Okay, very good. So colleagues, do you have any questions for Mr. Wanderer at this point?
I guess, I guess my only question is, it seems like several of the places commented about the impact on tourists who may not, you know, have arrived with their own reusable container. And did you have any thought about how we could make sure that that is not a problem? Because we don't want people thirsty unnecessarily. I mean, if you're out for a long day of touring, I think we do want to make sure people can get a drink.
My assumption is that most of these establishments will be selling water in hopefully aluminum containers. And so it, water will be available. It will be more expensive. Pete's, I think, sells it for $2.50 a bottle. Most of the places that sell the plastic bottles sell it for a buck.
And I guess I'm, I guess I'm just seeing a bunch of places who said, you know, it will affect their bottom line and/or, you know, this is all that, like, the students can afford, or the students actually mostly have reusable bottles already. I'm less worried, but the, the combination of the impact to the bottom line and several of our small businesses and the concern about tourists, I think, is where I'm stuck a little bit.
Okay, well, actually, Stop &amp; Shop said it would affect their bottom line, and so did Theater Pharmacy. I got the impression that Theater Pharmacy's water sales amount to very, very little. So I'm not particularly worried about them. And Stop &amp; Shop was able to adjust to the ban on plastic bags. I think they'll adjust to the ban on water bottles as well. You know, because, because the, the alternatives are readily available. And they're perhaps a little more expensive, but they're available.
Mr. Wanderer, I would also note that for some of these locations, water in plastic bottles can be fairly expensive. So it depends on the retailer, how they're pricing their goods. Mr. Lucenti?
I don't have a question, but I have just some feedback for the board. On Thursday morning, the Center Committee had a robust discussion about this, and they voted unanimously to not support it. And, and the reason they, not that they don't see the vision for it, but they thought the article as written was not holistic enough in our view of what are we doing about plastics, right? Because you can, you can ban one thing, and this is, this, this article bans the specific type of plastics. So, you know, how do you even know who has which thing where? And it just becomes a little, it fell to them that it wasn't fully baked, use lack of a better word. And that we, we should bring this back after some more study and some more holistic work. The other thing that came up was the concept of water bill, water filling stations being more readily available. But one of the challenges we have, of course, as a community in New England is it's really hard to get water outside somewhere when it's, you know, 30 degrees and they've shut the water off to the water filling stations. So. The statue. I don't know if we can drink the water in the statue, but. And we do turn that, that water off. I see, I see David Pinson shaking his head. So I just wanted to point that out. So the board is all on the same page with what the position of the Center Committee was and, and that they did have a discussion on this article.
Thank you. That actually reminded me, I'm sorry, I meant to say this. EDAC had very similar concerns and also voted against it for many of the same reasons, including the limitation to water bottles, but the plastic bubbling water, you know, like a fizzy water, whatever, and other beverages, iced tea, everything else, which could be, which would not be banned.
Right, thank you. I did notice that Mr. Michelson is here with his hand up remotely. Ms. Michelson, did you want to add to what Mr. Lucenti said, or were you satisfied? Mr. Michelson, of course, is Chair of the Center Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Other things to add to that, as long as you can hear me here? Increased cost to the consumer for the quote-unquote "healthy" alternative, which is just regular water. Yes, you can get it in cans and other packaging. Literate will still occur because you still have those, something to throw away and hopefully in the right place. And like someone else mentioned about the tourists. I mean, you, they want to grab a drink to go outside, and, and for businesses, most of them do not have a public filling station. The only place that you can get, get water is in the bathroom, which doesn't seem like an appropriate spot for someone in the bathroom to go fill up their water bottle. And it's hard to build out spigots like, like a regulatory already does have. So those were the other comments that we had.
Thank you, Mr. Michelson. Other questions or comments? We do have other things to cover. Mr. Malloy?
Just very quickly, not taking a position one way or the other, but enforcement after the fact will also become an issue. You know, the bylaw as it's written would be the town manager's designate. And I've discussed this with our health director because that's who the designate is. And it would possibly require us in another year or so to take a look at adding some staffing to the health department because there will be both visits to a, a large number of businesses, but also in public visits and enforcement actions that need to be taken.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. And I think we have Mr. Macarios walking into the building. Yes. If you want to catch your breath, you can, but I did ask the question of, please, the experience in Concord, as I understand that this language of this bylaw is the same. And as Town Council for Concord, you have had experience with the implementation.
I assume this is a bottled water by.
You assume correctly, bottled water bylaw.
So I, I do not want to comment on the availability of free water, and it is readily available in a lot of establishments all winter long. And that there are quite a few outdoor stations that are available, of course, all summer long. I, I understand there, according to Mr. Sandin, there are four on the bike path alone. So water is available and it is easily protected.
All right, Ms. Macarios?
Yes, I'm sorry for the delay. Hit some traffic on the way. So my experience with this bylaw in Concord goes back to before its promulgation, and we actually had anticipated some significant pushback at the time. Concord was the first, as far as we knew, the first municipality in the country to do this. There was some initial reluctance from, or some initial threats of a challenge from local convenience stores and some affiliated organizations with them that never materialized. To my knowledge, there's never been an issue with enforcement. There's not been an issue with availability of water. It has, anecdotally, I would say that, much like everybody sees today, there, it's caused there to be a lot of additional folks bringing their own bottle, a lot more filling stations. The town has made that part of their priority. The issues have not changed in terms of the legal issues. There's, in fact, now that there are more municipalities that do this, there is a matter of the, the, the issues that would have come up under either the dormant commerce clause of the US, which is not a real clause, but the Commerce Clause, the US Constitution, and the dormant commerce clause principles have all really been addressed over and over. And so there, there's not much of a legal issue. The only other thing I would add, and I think it's, it's captured in this version of the bylaw as well, the emergency exception has come in to play here and there over time. And that delegation to the town manager's office to suspend the, the implementation of the bylaw actually came as a result of an event that happened in between when this bylaw was first proposed in Concord by, by citizens petition, and then, and did not pass, and then the second time when it did pass. In between that time was, if you recall, there was a massive MWRA rupture in 2011, 2012, when this first happened. That happened to be about a week after town meeting, so it was fresh on everyone's mind. That exemption was put into place partially because of a situation like that. If the town's water was affected and bottled water was necessary, or if a boil water order or so, so on was needed.
Thank you, Ms. Macarios. So colleagues, I think we have heard broadly. Mr. Sandin, did you want to make a comment?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment then, unless you're, if you're ready.
Yes, no, no, I want to, I want to move us along, so.
All right, so thank you, Mr. Macarios, for that explanation of how things are working in Concord, and I really appreciate the fact that, that this bylaw is the same as the bylaw that's in Concord and that there have been no real enforcement issues or, or even pushback from folks in Concord for this. And if I recall, this is about 12 years ago that it was implemented in Concord. And I look at this as a health issue. If you look at the recent studies, you see there's 240,000 microplastic particles in every liter bottle of this water. So what I think of it is, is we should be addressing this from a health perspective, and I would support moving forward, given that we're using the same language as Concord, and Concord has had a good experience with it. I think we'll figure it out. If Concord can figure it out, that Lexington can figure it out.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin. So we are running slow, so I'm not going to take public comment on items tonight because we need to get over to town meeting. I think debate for this will occur at town meeting. I will voice that I am currently inclined to support this, but I am interested in the discussion at town meeting. Any last questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'd like to thank Mr. Wanderer and Mr. Macarios. And we'll move now to Mr. Daggett, who is proposing an amendment to Article 29, which will be heard tonight. And his amendment is to 29A, the portion addressing noise control for construction projects. Mr., Mr. Daggett is enhancing those elements in a small amount. Mr. Daggett, are you available? Yes. You should be able to speak.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm here.
Good. I'm going to, Ms. Exdel.
So just a note, Mr. Daggett did submit a video. It's about three minutes. And he had requested, if the board had time to play that today, Ms. Katzenbach does have it, but I would leave that to the chair's discretion. Thank you.
So colleagues, this came in today. I assume you haven't had time to review? In which case, Ms. Katzenbach, could you play it on the screen?
It is my pleasure to present to you this amendment to Article 29A, which proposes four adjustments to further enhance this article. To begin, I would like to first reintroduce the definition of ledgework that is defined in the main motion. To put these definitions in context, here are a few real-world examples of ledgework from an ongoing construction project in East Lexington. First, the use of a hydraulic hammer to repeatedly strike rock to break it. Next, the use of a hammer drill to bore holes into the surface of a rock. Next, rock crushing, which uses powered equipment to break down large rocks into smaller pieces. The main motion intends to prohibit ledgework from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM on weekdays and on weekends and legal holidays, but may leave ambiguity regarding the types of ledgework that must comply. This amendment includes the full superset of ledgework types. Since 2020, noise mitigation plans and the use of sound attenuation barriers have been required for certain projects with mixed results. Here is a project that uses barriers specifically designed for noise suppression. Here is another project where noise barriers were made for materials on the construction site and only attempts to block sound on one side of the noise source. Here is another example of the same method used elsewhere on the project site. For many common pieces of equipment used in ledgework, there are already commercial noise mitigation solutions. Here is a noise reduction kit for a commonly used rock drill that would achieve compliance with our noise bylaw. To address this, the amendment adds additional language to reduce ambiguity regarding requirements of noise mitigation plans. Next, the main motion proposes an optional requirement for noise monitoring and reporting by the developer. And the amendment makes this required by default unless waived by the building commissioner, improving compliance and reducing staff burden. Here's an example of a ruggedized noise and vibration monitor designed for construction and blasting that can be left in the field for weeks at a time. In fact, an abutter from the development in East Lexington had one of these monitors implanted on their property and logged noise levels as high as 115 decibels. There are many other commercial monitoring products like these that have solar panels and built-in cellular connections to automatically collect and send data continuously for months at a time. Lastly, this amendment includes a provision for the town to keep a record of noise complaints from residents and any resulting actions in order to create more transparency for residents and to create data that will aid the work of the Noise Advisory Committee. Finally, thanks to the Select Board for bringing Article 29 forward, and I hope you will support this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Daggett. Colleagues, just a few additional comments. Mr. Daggett did file an early draft of what he was intending to do last week. And I edited the main draft to take into account some grammatical errors he had found, as well as some minor non-substantive changes. The changes Mr. Daggett is proposing here, in my view, are in, in spirit of what we intended to do with the main motion, but they extend slightly beyond what was written. And as a result, I did not accept those changes because the board had no chance to review it. That said, my concerns were in two places. One was the definition of ledgework actually hadn't been in the original version of the draft. Mr. Macarios edited to make it clearer and put that definition in at the beginning. And in that definition includes a rock crushing, which we had not enumerated in the set of ledgework techniques that would have been excluded from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. And since that is a material change, we left it for Mr. Daggett to file as an amendment. And the second major change was in requiring the reporting and public access to the reporting of noise issues. And that could incur additional staff burden, and again, was a material change. So it appears as part of this amendment. Mr. Malloy, were you able to consider the, the impact on staff for the reporting request?
Yes, I did speak with Jim Kelly, our building commissioner, about that. And while it will be additional work, he believes that he can absorb that amount of work.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. So colleagues, questions? Mrs. Barry?
A follow-up for Mr. Malloy. Did Mr. Kelly have any concerns about this proposed amendment to the motion?
No, the only other concern that Mr. Kelly raised was the worrying about pavement breaking and what exactly that was and whether it applied to the DPW.
Right, and, and to clarify, pavement breaking already exists in the current bylaw? So the, the question of what it might mean exists today, and there's, there's no change from the current status. Mr. Lucenti?
So I disagree with the, I mean, the, the premise here is to reduce the amount of time that, that the noise can be made.
The, we already.
We, we've changed the time.
So we had already limited construction noise and much of ledgework. There are a few types of ledgework that we didn't enumerate before. So those were still being done from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. But hammering, pneumatic hammering, various other kinds of construction ledgework were already excluded. What this change did was clarify the collection of work that is classified as ledgework.
Well, let me, let me ask you a clarifying question then, so it's, because it's, I'm not sure it's clear to me right now. Our DPW or engineering department, if they're doing a road resurfacing, can, or if I'm reading this correctly, they should not be starting any road resurfacing before 9:00 AM? If we're, if we're following the town bylaw? Is that misreading? And can anyone clarify why that would be wrong and what part of the?
Well, it's, we're talking about three different bylaws. I just want to make sure which one you're talking about, Mr. Lucenti. The current, as it stands today, the proposed prior to Mr. Daggett's amendment or with Mr. Daggett's amendment? That's what I just want to be clear about.
Let's talk about the current, because I want to make sure I'm clear, because now I'm not. Now I'm unclear. Let's start with what we currently have.
So I just, I just want to be clear, Mr. Pato, I think you started off by saying ledgework didn't include rock crushing today. It is a bit odd, and one of the reasons we suggested including in the definitions is not in the definitions, but in noise mitigation plan for construction in that section, the current bylaw. There's a sentence that said the project entails rock removal of heavy machinery, including ledge removal, rock pounding, rock crushing, rock drilling, or rock cutting, and then parentheses collectively defined as ledgework. Unfortunately, that, for whatever reason, when that was inserted earlier, was not in the definition. The new definition includes that. So back to, to the question about pavement breaking.
Yeah, excuse me, the new unamended definition.
Then, the, the new unamended definition, the, the intent was to take the definition that was buried not in the definition section of the bylaw and move it up to the definition. So we're talking about the same thing throughout the bylaw. So that, that's where that came from. In terms of the current bylaw, as it stands today, without the, prior to Article 29 at all, it is, it, it does cover town activity. So the, the issue comes down to this sort of definitional of what parts would consist of ledge or construction activities that were covered under the, I believe before it was just rock breaking or rock crushing. And it was, sorry. Breaking of rock and pavement was nine to five. So the, yes, so today it would still, it should not start before nine under today's bylaw. As amended, it would, that would stay the same, and as amended by Mr. Daggett, it would stay the same.
But we're adding, we're adding in the mitigation measures, which did not exist for pavement breaking.
Correct.
So if we're, so I'm just trying to understand the cost to the taxpayers and the DPW. work or changes to their work that may have to happen today, or if this passes, the DPW should also be filing a noise mitigation plan with every road construction project? Because theoretically, they're at the edge of everybody's property when they're going down the road. If they're doing a re-milling of a road, they shouldn't start before 9:00 AM and they should do a mitigation plan, or am I mistaken?
So this comes into the whether this is, and I don't know if Mr. Malloy, you're about to address this, whether this applies to town departments generally? And this is another issue that has to do with what's being amended versus not. Currently, Section 80-2D has language that says "All town departments and agencies shall, to the fullest extent consistent with federal, state, and regulations, carry out their programs in a manner as to comply with this bylaw." So town departments would have to carry that out. So if you extend pavement breaking requirements as ones requiring mitigation plans, I actually think you do end up applying it to those, to town departments. So the answer, the short answer is yes, unless there's some federal or state requirement requires them to start a certain time, if it's a state road, or, you know, that work certainly would happen separately.
In addition, the requirement for noise mitigation plan applies when the rock breaking work or pavement breaking work exceeds seven days. And Mr. Pincinelli, for most stretches of road, the milling portion is not done over a particularly long period of time, if I remember correctly. And Mr. Pincinelli, welcome to the microphone. He's shaking his head yes.
Yes, most of the, I mean, unless we run into weather or something like that, the milling won't last beyond that seven-day period.
Right, and it isn't just that it went over, it could be longer than a seven-day period. It was seven days of actual rock breaking or pavement breaking. So this bylaw really is all about long-term construction projects and ledge, which do tend to take sometimes months of work. So they wouldn't trigger the kind of road work that we're talking about. It would potentially trigger town construction projects or breaking into ledge for doing foundations.
I'd like to address this for a moment, because I read it slightly differently, that the section that we're talking about when it comes to pavement breaking relates only to contractors and residents and not the Public Works Department. And it's very clear in this, it says blasting and the use of powered equipment used in rock breaking and pavement breaking, including but not limited to hydraulic or pneumatic hammering by contractors or residents, is permitted on weekdays only between nine and five. And then it goes on to say contractors and residents engaged in rock breaking or pavement breaking shall in addition be required to comply with all noise mitigation measures requirements in Section 80-8. It does not say Public Works or the town. It says it's specific to contractors and residents.
Mr. Lucente?
With all due respect, the town hires contractors to do the work, so it's not the DPW department doing the work themselves. I mean, I'm not the, I'm not town council, so I'll defer to town council's opinion on that.
So this is, this is one, and we've talked about some of the limitations in this bylaw and sort of its genesis. I agree that that language on its own seems to suggest that it's, when it's done by private parties. What I was referring to earlier, Section 80-2D, is where it gets tricky, because that's where there is this mandate to town departments to comply with the bylaw to the fullest extent consistent with law. And so that's, that's a counterargument now. It doesn't mean necessarily that the town would find itself, because that's the primary enforcement piece, but it definitely sets out an expectation that would be the same policy. A lot of the different sections of this, for instance, have particular exemptions that would only make sense to the town as applied that way. But I do see Mr. Malloy's reading, it's, that particulars, the particular section with pavement, pavement does does appear to be limited to private parties until you read 80, Section 2.
Right, but again, it exists in the current-
Which, as it exists, right. Right, the new provisions don't do anything to change that other than expand what ledge work is, which is still there. It's still different than pavement breaking.
Mr. Pincinelli?
So I guess I just want to clarify that in the current provision, it would be seven days or longer? Because otherwise, if we're looking at beginning contractors at nine o'clock and the noise mitigation plans, there's a lot of added cost to that and delays in performing those projects. I just wanted to clarify that as if it says currently, we are usually under that seven-day on road paving for the milling part. I mean, it may take, you know, a month or two to pave the road, but the milling part will go quicker than that.
Mr. Lucente?
Actually, I've said enough at this point. I'll let everybody else talk.
So other questions?
Ms. Hay? We don't have anywhere a document that shows in parallel where, effectively, the red line between the current bylaw, the proposed amendment, and the newly amended amendment, right? We don't have anything that's a side-by-side of all three? Because I'm getting a little lost between what's in the amendment we just heard this evening versus the amendment that we had seen previously, and I'm trying to make sure that I understand the distinction.
Right, so the main motion today did have a red line against the existing bylaw. Mr. Daggett, you have your hand up. I think you may have a, there you go.
Where's that?
That's on the-
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was just going to ask if you could bring this up, because I think this makes very clear that, you know, even just the last section we were talking about, the amendment I'm proposing was just a few words on top of your all's motion. So this is the best way, I think, to look at this. You can see the change from your motion from the original and my motion versus the original.
Mr. Pato?
Ms. Axel?
Ms. Hay, if you want to look at it, it's on the town's website, on the ATM website.
Thank you. It's also in our packet. It's just labeled as description instead of compare. That's, that was why I couldn't find it. Thank you very much.
So- Mr. Malloy?
So I don't see where, if we're reading that the DPW is required to comply with this, I don't see where this amendment makes a change to that.
It does not.
It does not. I would agree, to the extent that it does apply to DPW, that's because of sections of this bylaw not being amended at all.
So Section 80-4 already applies to the DPW, which I acknowledge you're already complying with?
Yes.
Yes, so in that, if it's that's that seven-day period, then yes, we currently comply with that.
All right. So colleagues, we will be debating this tonight. This was for your information. I mean, we could have chosen to absorb this, but my view is this is just too late to absorb. And we will see whether or not town meeting wishes to apply this amendment to the underlying motion, whether or not they pass either. Any last comments? Seeing none? We're going to- So, Mr. Pato, I'm just wondering, I know it's not in our purview as the select board to talk about when articles come up for consideration. I don't know if it's possible to. It's way late. I don't know. Ms. Axel?
I'd have to go back and look to see if this is date certain this evening. I don't have that in my notes.
It is not date certain. And a motion can be made to lay this on the table to consider it kind of later date. When this was put on, we did not know there was an amendment coming.
I'll just comment that I look forward to when we have a noise committee established to help dig into these issues, because this is, I think, if we've proven anything over the last few years, the noise bylaw is very complicated. There's a lot of stakeholders, and there's a lot of nuance to what does and doesn't apply. We just had a discussion about amongst the inner circle of folks in town government about, does it or does it not apply to specific road projects? You know, it's something we should all be sort of knowing like the back of our hand, especially for our own town departments. So I look forward to that. I'm going at this with a little bit of a I know we're trying to respond to the arguments and headaches that were, happened from projects over in the East Lexington area. And I just don't want us to be creating things that are making it worse for our, you know, ourselves and other ways, you know. I look forward to when we have a noise committee, and maybe that group can take a deeper dive into every one of these sentences and all the aspects here. So hopefully, that'll get it done soon.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lucente. So I'm going to move now to the select board report. It was in your packet. You received copy over the weekend in addition. This was the draft that we had previously considered with a few edits that came in, and I added the intro section as well as a recognition of Mr. Malloy's retirement, which I had not wanted to include prior to his announcement.
I think it looks good. Thank you for the edits.
So there is one question I have, and Mr. Sandin, your last sentence of your section looked like it lost words. I couldn't understand what it meant. I'm going to ask the board if there are no other requests for changes that we approve this, subject to final clarification edits that I'm empowered to make. Right, so, Ms. Sandin, if you could look at that and give me the correction, I can apply it, but if you, if the board is willing to adopt it with that correction site on the scene, we'll be able to release it to town meeting. My expectation is that the correct words are in a previous version. I suspect, right.
I think we should approve it tonight and then allow the chair to fix whatever sentences need to be fixed. I don't think it's going to be material enough if it stays under the idea of composting and being climate leaders.
All right. So colleagues, if you're ready, I'll move to approve the select board report to the 2024 Annual Town Meeting as presented with additional edits at the discretion of the chair.
Second?
So move the second. Did all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed say nay? It is unanimous, five to zero. The last item here is for us to take positions. I'm going to say let's pass on this. We will actually take positions tonight when we go. All right. Next item is to discuss and approve expenditures for the funds for gift of cash received for the Lowell Street paving project and approve the First Amendment to the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Burlington, Mr. Malloy.
I'll try to be super fast. The board, I believe, already is familiar with Chapter 44, Section 53A, allows departments to receive funds but can't expend them unless the approval for the use of those funds is voted on by the select board. And in this case, Burlington was originally going to do the repaving of Lowell Street after the water line was put in. Our DPW has indicated that they prefer to manage the contract and ensure the contractor meets Lexington's expectations on the quality of work and working with our residents. And so town council drafted and attached amendment to the original IMA between Lexington and Burlington. And so there are two votes that are being requested here. One is to approve the use of the funds from the town of Burlington for the purpose of repaving Lowell Street. And the second one is seeking authorization with the town manager to execute the First Amendment to the intermunicipal agreement for water main and Lowell Street paving between Lexington and Burlington.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Colleagues, any questions? Seeing none, I move to approve the use of funds from the town of Burlington for the purpose of repaving Lowell Street and further authorize the town manager execute the First Amendment to the intermunicipal agreement for water main and Lowell Street paving between Lexington and Burlington.
Second?
If you move the second, did all in favor say aye? Aye, and opposed say nay? None, it is five to zero unanimous. Third item is for us to discuss town manager's search process. So tonight, we're not going to go into detail. In our packets, we have material from the 2018 Town Manager Search Screening Committee, the charge for that committee. We also have information on the material we used in the RFP, the definition of what is it that the town views itself to be and what is it looking for in the town manager. Those all need to be updated, but provide us with a significant head start. Certainly much more than we had in 2018. Most significantly, I think, we're going to be calling for participation in a search committee. And the charge that we had in 2018 called for two members of the select board, at that time called the Board of Selectmen, to participate in that and essentially to lead that activity. I would like for us to identify at least one member to lead this activity and consider a second. Cutting to the chase, I, like a week or two ago, I think I volunteered Ms. Hay to take on some work. But knowing that she has just concluded the search for the executive director of the MMA and previously worked on a town manager's search, I would like to ask for the board to ask her to take the lead in this activity.
Will you do it?
I will.
Thank you. We're married now. We're all married.
I didn't say I do. I said I will.
Will I do it's the same.
Hardly. The, and I'm very glad you all said that. The, I would like to identify a second member. But before going to that, because Ms. Hay, I had asked her to, or the board asked her to take the lead on looking at HRC restructuring and charge, I'm going to say that's too much at the same time. And for the moment, at least, I'll take that responsibility back and work on it. And then we'll come back to the board. And like, what I know Ms. Hay had been doing was sort of doing a sketch timeline of things to do on that work. And I look forward to her just giving us that information, and I'll take over from there. And she's shaking her head yes. Very good.
I have done that. I've had some contact with staff and we've done nothing.
Great. So nobody's jumping up. Mr. Sandin, you haven't done one of these before. Would you be interested in?
Be happy to help.
All right, so why don't we start with the two of you, unless there's any concerns?
If you want to do me.
I think it would be a different perspective.
Sandin, you are not new. You're seasoned.
And I'll also say that the charge called for there being a select board member emeritus, which in this case would mean a board, a selectman emeritus. The only people who've been on the board selectmen are sitting at this table.
Selectboard.
There you go.
Zoom in past.
Keep going.
All right, so given the time, why don't we move any further discussion to our next meeting? Unless members have items they already think they want to cede into this process for Ms. Hay.
Just for clarity, we're bringing back to a, not our Wednesday meeting, but the next Wednesday, we'll have a charge that we can maybe approve?
At least review, yes.
At least review, okay.
Right, so Ms. Hay, if you could take that lead so that we will be running when we come back? Good. Good. All right. So that takes us to item number four, which is an easement at the Fisk Common, uh, Fisk Common condominium. Mr. Malloy?
So, uh, as the board is aware, the town has been negotiating for a little bit more than the past decade, uh, to put into place an easement agreement with the Fisk Common Condominium Trust to allow students of the Fisk School to walk across their property to access school property. It was originally in the planning board approval for the Fisk Pondom uh, Common Condominium Project approximately forty years ago, but they never been formalized and legally filed as an easement. Um, I've attached the final easement that town council has worked on and that the Condominium Trust Board recently approved on a four to one vote. There may be some minor non-substantive changes that town council might need to make before we finalize it, which is included in the recommendation, uh, which is similar to some of the other motions we approved on agreements. Um, and so that's basically it at this point. I, I think we've finally gotten to a point of agreement with the Fisk Common condominium trust.
Right, thank you, Mr. Malloy. I didn't remember being at the Fisk Common Condominiums last time I was chair and, uh, being very close to an agreement at that point. So glad to see it's finally getting there. Colleagues, any questions? Ms. Sandin?
Just, just thank you, because I, my, my kids are now twelve years out of Lexington High School, but they went to Fisk and we walked on these, uh, trails and, uh, it's very, uh, appreciative.
Thank you. And I'm sure the rest of the families at Fisk appreciate your work on this as well. Thanks. Uh, anybody have comments on the substance of the agreement? Seeing none, um, I move to authorize town manager to execute the easement agreement between the town of Lexington and the Fisk Common Condominium Trust as attached and further to authorize non-substantive edits as recommended by town council.
Second.
We moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed, say nay. None, it is unanimous five zero. To bring us to our last item, should be quick. The library, uh, trustees are doing their annual nomination. Um, and they need a member of the select board to serve on the nominating, uh, committee. Is there's Ms. Barry and Ms. Hay are currently our members, and I suspect they want to continue. I know that when I was a member of the executive board, I never wanted to come off. Uh, uh, so we were looking, looking for someone else on this side of the table to take that role.
It's a good plan.
So, Mr. Sandin, you've been the delegate to do this for the last couple of years. Um, is it not a heavy load that we do need to name somebody?
Um, let's see, should we flip a coin?
It's a super light left.
No, we both done it. We both done it a little recently, so, um, I'm, I'm, I'm only worried if it's before Patriots Day. If it's after Patriots Day, oh, more time to do it. I, I won't have any time for it. Sorry, Mr. Sandin.
When is it? I need a reply by April twelfth and then schedule.
So it's shortly, shortly after Patriots Day.
It was after Patriots Day.
They need a name by, we need a name by April twelfth.
Okay.
I will say the other two nominated have submitted their names, so you could even meet now for half an hour, an hour. That's all it takes, I mean it.
I'll, I'll do it. It's fine.
All right. So Ms. Lucente is volunteering. Does the board have any adjustments? None? Uh, so I move to appoint Mr. Lucente as the select board representative by the nominating committee of the trustees of Cary Library.
Second.
Move the seconded all in favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed, say nay. None, it is five zero. Thank you, Mr. Lucente. Um, I shouldn't have said this was quick. Um, okay. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the select board will be on Wednesday, March twentieth at six PM via hybrid participation prior to town meeting. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
And the seconded all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, say nay. It is unanimous five zero. Thank you. See you next door.
Mr. Pato, it's six fifty-four. You ended up a minute early.